Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so on to the public meeting portion. And I was just speaking with John just a little while ago. The first item is the 2020 sewer comp plan update. And prior to any public comments, or in this particular case, it would need to be an email. Mark Freiberg's here and he's going to give us an overview of exactly that 200 and something page document that we got, exactly what's in these materials to get us up to date on it. So, Mark, you're up.
Well, before we get started with Mark, we offered the, we offered the public chance to make any comments.
Okay.
We have last, we received were three different comments, two, three of which were all for the rezone application. So we'll read those into the public record for that. But we did not receive any other general public comments that aren't for one of the specific projects that are having a public hearing for today.
Okay, so John, here's your option. Would you like to read that into the record when we get to that portion? Or do you want to do it prior to going over all three items? It's your choice.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna read those during the specific public hearing.
Okay.
But we don't, we haven't quite worked out the ability for the public to raise their hand during this process. If they, but if there was, if anybody wanted to make a general public comment about something that's not on the agenda, this is generally the time that we ask them to do that. But we don't have that ability. Well, during the public, after our presentations, we'll see if we can have you call on people to see if there's anybody in the public that wants to give public comments on the specific public hearing that they have called for.
Well, I know Mr. Quam is here. So when we get down to his item and two, we will give him.
Well, I see some other names too.
Oh, yeah, I don't see any others.
For other projects. So we, we'll try at that time to enable them to make their public comments during this venue. If there's technical difficulties, we're going to work, we're going to keep the public hearing open so they can submit ready. But we'll discuss that more detail later. But that will go for the public hearing that Mark is going to present ahead of also. So if there's any public comments, after you open that public comment period, we'll try to work through it. If not, we'll discuss more later.
Okay, that's fine. So, Mark, you're on, you're on deck and you have the floor. I see that he's still unmuted, that he's muted.
Sorry about that. I started speaking to myself. Thank you, Joe, for that introduction. Good evening, planning commission members and staff and the public. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the sewer comprehensive plan update that we're currently taking through the process. Bill, do you have slides that you'll be able to put up on the screen?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So if you would go ahead and get to our introductory one and then I do. On my side.
In the meantime, anybody that has their, that has their microphone still on during the presentation, if you could please turn off your, turn yourself on mute until it's time for you to talk. It really helps the, the sound quality. Thank you.
Okay, so I wanted to give you the Cliff Notes version of what you had in your packet with the entire plan here. There's a lot of material here and I'll try to be as brief as I can. And if you have any questions, I'll certainly be glad to try to answer them. On the second slide, John, we have kind of a synopsis of what this process was all about. That's it. Thank you. The sewer comprehensive plan is a compilation of result findings of recent planning and engineering analyses completed for the city of Cedar Woolley. The purpose of this analysis was to assess the ability of the existing sanitary sewer system and our treatment system to accommodate wastewater flows and loadings from the existing and the projected population of the city. And we projected that over a 20-year period. This plan updates and supersedes the city's existing 2005 comprehensive sewer plan. And it has been prepared in accordance with ecology requirements. Pace Engineering is the company that did the work for us on this update. They were also the firm that did the 2005 plan. They had some continuity that we wanted to take advantage of in the planning process. The other person involved heavily in this was Katie Isaacson. Katie is a financial analyst and she has been doing work with our particular sewer rates since I've been in, in the city. She's also a former Washington State Legislature and very, very knowledgeable on the process. And of course, the wastewater treatment plant staff as well as engineering department have been heavily involved in this entire process. Next slide, please. Just a little background on what area we're dealing with. The city of Cedar Woolley service area is about six square miles, including the urban growth area. And we have 3,560 sewer service connections right now. And the vast majority of those are in the city limits. We do have a few out of city connections. We charge an additional 50% of the sewer rates for those that are outside. We like to encourage people to come in. That's the reason for the higher rate. And whenever possible, we, we do make that happen. The primary purpose of the study is to program for future improvements to an expansion of the system to deal with existing deficiencies as well as to plan for future growth. And as I mentioned earlier, it's a 20-year planning period. We did the basic work on this in 2019. We're a little behind our original schedule because of the COVID-19 pandemic that slowed most of these things down, as you know. And so the data goes, or the projections go through 2038. Our current population, you should agree with the numbers that you've been seeing with the comprehensive plan. That's the basis we used. 13,404 residents as of 2019, with 12,327 of those residents having sewer service. The rest are on septic systems within the city. And we'll be talking about it more, but that's one of the things we're trying to deal with in our planning is to move as many of those services from septic systems to our sewer system. And I mentioned that 20-year growth, the projections at 2038 are 16,840 persons within the city limits. Next slide, Bill, please. So this map just shows the, both the urban growth area and the city limits. We have primarily hydraulically two basins we're dealing with. We have what's called the township street basin, which is in green. And the other part would be everything else in the city that's to the west of that, running up basically to the Burlington Northern Railroad on the northern limits and out to Collins Road on the west end of the city and south to the treatment plant, which is roughly in the middle where you see the green and the blue meat on this particular map down near the river. Next slide, please. Our existing system, we have 46 miles of gravity sewer mains. They're a combination of PVC, concrete, clay, high-density polyethylene and cured-in-place plastic pipe. There are 2.31 miles of force mains that are all HDPE. 0.68 miles of 24-inch outfall, which runs from our plant down to the Skagit River, where we discharge the flows after they've been treated. The piping totals, all of those that you see is 262,540 lineal feet, roughly. There are 12 pump stations in our systems. Essentially, what the pump stations do is we predominantly have a gravity system. And of course, that requires elevations where a relatively flat city. And so in various places, we have a sewer gravity system that drains to a, a deep well. And then we have pumps in that that pump it up to higher locations where it can gravity, eventually down to the treatment plant. And you've seen those around town. There's one out on Cook Road. And there's one up on, there's one on State Street. There's one on Highway nine, in fact, a couple of them there. And they're spread around various places. They generally speaking have two duplex pumps in them. The major ones of which are 10, also have backup emergency generators that you'll see next to those. And then we have two small units that have been put in in the last few years for parks where we have flat grades that we need to get that back to the gravity system. One is at, at Bangham Park, which was put in when we renovated that back in 2015 and 14, 15. And then a new one at Hauser Park for the improvements that are going on out there right now. By the way, if you haven't been out there to see, Hauser Park's coming right along. We're planning on paving the parking lot on the 25th. And the new restroom is complete, other than doors. And so it's coming along well. There's, there's a very nice walking path out there that circles the playfields that are associated with that. So soon as that's open, you'll want to go out there and maybe take a tour around that and see, see that facility. Next slide, please. This next map shows the piping system itself within the city. And it also shows the pump station locations I was just alluding to. And the green lines are gravity lines. The purple ones are force mains that I mentioned. That's where the flow from the pump station is pumped uphill to a manhole that will then drain down to the gravity system. The wastewater treatment plants identified kind of in the lower center of the map there. Next slide, please. So a key part of the process of preparing this comprehensive plan was doing a collection system analysis. And I'm going to talk about this in two parts. As you saw in the study itself, there's the collection system and then there's the wastewater treatment system. So these next few sides, slides will be on the collection system side. And that's the piping. The analysis was done by Paul Weller, our engineer at Pace. And he basically looked at the layout of those lines hydraulically and looked at the capacity of those lines existing. He also cranked into his analysis, which you can do through the magic of those things, what would, how those things would react, what their existing capacity is for growth and how that would be affected by the growth that we're, we're projecting. And the analysis did identify several areas where pipe upgrades were required to correct deficiencies under existing flow conditions. Really not too much of that. We've, we've been pretty active, as you know, over the last 14 years at least. And in fact, even before I got here, there were a couple of major trunk sewer projects that were built that we've, we have pretty much upgraded all of the trunk parts of our sewer system that are relatively new pipe. And so we're in good shape on that. The collection system would be the lines that flow into the trunk lines. For instance, Township Street, which I mentioned before, is a larger line that all of the neighborhoods drain into and then the, the pump stations that drain into those. The collection systems are, are in decent shape. We have been, through our ongoing process of maintenance, we have been doing about $450,000 a year projects to either reline those projects with cured-in-place plastic pipe. That's basically when you put that pipe inside of the existing pipes and, and expand it and cure it. That's why it's called cured-in-place. We've also done some pipe bursting where you actually run a hydraulic ram through the existing pipe, concrete or clay, and break that and drag a new HDPE pipe in after that. And then you go back and dig out and connect the services. There's a couple of other trenchless techniques that we've tried. In fact, we tried about all of those over the years that I've been here. It's been kind of fun. I started doing that in Colville and we've been continuing that. So we've done a lot of that. And then just dig them up and replace them, which we've done in a, in a number of places around town. I mentioned we, the analysis was performed for future flow conditions also. And we're looking at areas that might be bottlenecks. We plan for projects to, to make sure that we can, can handle the flow from the growth that we're projecting here. One project, one problem that we've known about for years is what's called inflow and infiltration. That's where we have leaking pipes. The clay and the concrete are the main culprits in that, that have joints that have separated over time and are allowing groundwater in. We also have in some places of town, prior to, oh, I'd say the last 30 years, it was acceptable to plum your roof drains and your sump pumps into our sewer system. That's no longer allowed because what that does is it causes big peaks in the flow for our system, which we then have to treat. Whereas it's better to handle those as a part of the stormwater system. So our INI program that is mentioned here is to go around and, and try to determine where that, those sources are and replace the pipe or upgrade it in the cases where we can do that. Or come up with ways of getting the other flow sources off of the system. So that's, that's something that will be, we've done in the past and we'll do another system after this, this plan is adopted or another round of doing that. The other recommend, recommended collection system improvements include a routine rehabilitation of the pump stations. We have several of those that have turned 20 years. In fact, the State Street one and the Cook Road one, we're both installed in the same year. And the pumps on those and some of the internal piping and the rails that hold the pumps need to be replaced. And so we're planning to do that this year. We, we've done a, a study of those, all 12 of the pump stations, well, the 10 major ones anyway, to see the condition of the equipment. And those are the two that are up to replace or rehabilitate this year. I mentioned the annual renewal and replacement program. We also have a grease program to where we, Wally Hoyt, our Public Works technician handles that for us. He keeps an eye on our system, especially downstream of restaurants or other businesses that might be generating grease. That becomes a real problem. You may have heard the term fatberg somewhere along the line. That's in sewer systems where collections of grease grow to sometimes enormous size. I read about one in London here a few years ago in their system. And they have some huge tunnels under that city, as you would imagine. They had one of those that was somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 tons. It was just huge that they, they fished out of that system. I don't know how they did that even, but they were able to get it out. But staying on top of that and encouraging the business owners to use the proper techniques when they dispose of their, both their wash water and their, their, their floor cleaning and that kind of stuff is really important. That's part of what we do with our sewer system. And then our supervisory control acquisition and data system, SCADA, that's basically how our system talks to itself. We have basically communications from all of our lift stations to our wastewater treatment plant. And then on the plant itself, all the equipment there is connected to a central, central computer system that allows us to see in real time the flows as they go up and down. For instance, the I and I was telling, telling you about, we can see immediately when that starts to jump during a rainfall event. So keeping that system updated is, is very important. Next slide, please. So the improvements that were identified in the sewer comprehensive plan, there's about $5 million in collection system improvements that we have actually programmed into our, our plan to complete over the next 10 years. For, for the capital improvements, rather than 20 years, we've, we've looked at just 10 on that. And as you can probably appreciate, even projecting 10 years is a bit of a guessing game, but it allows us to make sure, and this is a part of what I'll talk about in a minute, but to make sure we've got rates that are adequate to support the improvements that we see as being necessary, both to handle our deficiencies and our planned growth. The plan also discussed funding options for these improvements. We try as far as possible to fund with grant revenue funds where we can do that. There aren't many for sewer. So mostly we have to fund it with rate revenue that will support bonds or Public Works Trust Fund has a wonderful loan program that's basically 1% or less that we use for that. We've, we've built some of our collection projects using that, that program. In fact, we're getting close to paying off those, which is a good thing because we're looking at some new projects coming up. Rates, as I mentioned, connection charges is a big part of our revenue source also because as we grow and these improvements have to come in, it's not fair for the existing rate payers to have to pay for expansion. And so we do that through our connection charges and they're, they're relatively high. It's almost $9,000 to connect a single-family residential service. That's our base fee. And then for commercial operations, we do it based on fixtures. And it's, it's a fixture count with a calculation of that base residential fee that's equivalent to the same flow. So we also have developer financing, for instance, on Jones Road with that development that took place over the last couple of years. They actually extended the sewer line from the corner, corner of Garden of Eden out to their new site, which is good for us because we had them build that deep enough that it can be expanded farther to the east to fill in with the rest of the potentially developable parcels over to the railroad track. And so that's another way we get our sewer system expanded. In fact, that's a primary way that happens. We do allow collect connection fee credits to the developer up to the cost of their improvements that city is benefiting from. And that's, that's a good win-win for the city on that. So I've kind of outlined in the last three bullets, the rehabilitation projects that we have projected in the plan. There are about 3.4 million and that averages, as I mentioned, 340,000 per year. And that's paid for straight from rates. Again, that's, that's things that have to happen, that would have to happen whether you had growth or not. Infill includes filling in areas within the city that are currently on septic systems. I talked about that a little earlier. Those may be self-funded by special connection fees. We've done this about four times since I've been here. When we've had a road project that we didn't want to build a brand-new road and have, and not get a sewer main in. And so we funded that kind of betting on to come a little bit. We calculated the number of service connections possible in the area. And then we divided that up by the cost of the improvements. And then we have a special connection fee that goes on top of our normal connection fee. Those are generally, they're from $800 to, there's some that are $3,400. The most recent one of those was down on the area of Wes Nelson and Beatty Street, which we did a project over the last two years that infilled that area. And we funded it through our, our reserves and then it will be paid back over time as people hook up. We've already had over a dozen connections there. So it's already, it's not close to paying for itself yet, but we'll eventually get them all because people can get a waiver if they have a working system so they don't have to hook up immediately. But we do require on sale of the property that they, they have to pay the connection fee on sale. So eventually we get that, that money back. And then expansion includes providing services to newly developed areas and EGA areas. As I mentioned earlier, they're typically developer-funded, like the Jones Road project. We have shown, however, you're aware that we have the Jones John Liner Trail Road Corridor projects that we are planning to build. And I can talk a little about that if you'd like, where we're at. But we want to make sure, as I mentioned earlier, that we don't build a new road and not have the trunk sewers in or the collection lines to go with that. So we have programmed a million and a half dollars to make sure we do that in association with this road projects. The good news on that is, is we have developers actively working along some of those parts of the Jones John Liner Trail Corridor project. For instance, the Gateway Development that you've seen coming through the process is going to be building a portion of the trail road part of this project between Jones Road and FNS. They'll build that sewer system for us. And again, we'll give them connection fee credits for that. They'll also build our arterial street. So those are very helpful things. And there, there are a couple of other developments that will be contributing to that as well over time. Next slide, please. And this is just a picture of the capital improvement projects around town. The lines in red are, and you can see on that they have a E or an R or an I. I would be infill. E would be expansion and R would be rehabilitation. So we can move on from there to the existing wastewater treatment plant. Next slide, John, please. The wastewater treatment plant is responsible for treating all the flows generated by the city's sanitary sewer customers. I mentioned earlier, it just charges to the Skagit River via 24-inch outfall. This, the plant was originally constructed as a mechanical plant in 1956. Before that, they just went, flew or flowed directly to the river with no treatment to speak of. There have been major upgrades in 1973, 1994, and 1998. The 1998 upgrade, we are, I'll be talking more about this, but we're in the process and as related to this plan, planning for the next expansion for the plant, which you generally will see about every 20 years, depending on growth rates. We're a little beyond that, but we're starting to see those, those growth figures tick up. And so it's time to take a good look at that. Our treatment plant consistently operates within the limits of our, our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. That, that is a permit that's through the Washington State Department of Ecology. And they operate under the auspices of the, the federal EPA Clean Water Act. That's what's really driving all of these things, that these federal and the state level is the Clean Water Act. I think that was 1973. The plant is permitted for up to 2.07 million gallons per day. That's maximum monthly average, we call it. And it will take 7.2 million gallons per day in peak instantaneous flow. Those vary because when you get a heavy rainfall, it can jump up by three or four times pretty easily, mostly due to the INI that I talked about earlier. The plant is also permitted, permit limited for biological treatment beyond flow. We, we check two factors and are permitted under two factors. There's biological oxygen demand. That's, that's how much, the BOD, as they call it, that's how much uptake in oxygen happens through the microbes that are present in the system. You want to take care of that before you discharge into a river because if you don't, it will basically reduce the river below oxygen levels that will support aquatic life. So that's a very important measure. And then total suspended solids, which is pretty much just what it sounds, what kind of contaminants or just solids are in the water itself, which can be another thing that's, can be toxic to fish. So we measure also fecal coliform counts and we treat for that with ultraviolet disinfection before the water is, is discharged. Next slide, please. This is just one that shows you the process at the plant itself. I won't spend any time on that. If you're curious about it, certainly be glad to try to explain it to you. But this is the various things that we use at the plant to, to accomplish what we have to do under our permit. We have an oxidation ditch, which is the main process. And it basically operates using natural processes, the microbes that naturally break down organics. We inject air into that waste stream after we've screened it to get out any. We inject air into that waste stream after we've screened it to get out any kind of. Plastics or anything else that gets down into the sewer. And then it goes into a couple of clarifiers where it's further aerated and filtered to get off the solids that are remaining. The microbes that have died and those kind of things. Then we disinfect it and then it goes to the river. So as with the collection system, we've done an analysis on our plant to see a couple of things. I'd been looking at this since I got here in twenty oh seven. And these things, as I mentioned, generally are designed for a twenty year growth. Due to the recession that we had in in two thousand and eight. I suspected we were not going to be running out of capacity before we ran out of. Out of the equipment's ability to continue service. A lot of these pumps and motors and blowers. Will last about twenty years, fifteen to twenty years, and then you have to look at renovating them or replacing them. So. The question for us is what we're gonna, we're gonna see, where are we gonna have to rebuild this plant mechanically? How long could it continue to operate if we focused on that? Or will we need to plan within the short term for an upgrade to the plant itself? So and we engaged a company named Brown and Caldwell to do that study for us. We first looked at the condition of the existing equipment and did a. A spreadsheet on what it's going to take to keep it running as it is right now. And then we did a capacity assessment to look at the same growth figures we did for the collection system. How much growth capacity did we still have within our plant and what would be likely to be the next level? At twenty thirty eight and what would be, we need to have in a way of additional treatment capacity to do that. The metric that we have from the Department of Ecology is when our plant reaches eighty five percent of either the flow or the biological treatment. Limits that we have in our permit, then we need to do what's called an engineering study or a facility plan. And what that does is that then designs or tells you what you need to do when you design your next treatment plant and then you have to follow up from that. With doing the plan. It also will confirm the timeline on when you do that. So based on what we found in the capacity assessment, we had a couple of surprises. First, we found there were some errors in our previous nineteen ninety eight design. Some mechanical and some of them were just basic errors that really shouldn't have happened, but they did. Part of the biological treatment process, it was basically our digestors. The blowers and those were significantly undersized. They actually would have done what they projected they would do, but they they were too optimistic in. How much air we could put into that that system in that process and still operate efficiently. They they were too optimistic about that. And so those those pumps are not large enough to support. Support our existing treatment process. That was one unpleasant surprise that we're dealing with right now. We had a couple of mechanical bottlenecks too. As I mentioned, this was a remodel of our nineteen seventy three plant when they did this in nineteen ninety eight. And they had some pipes that they did an upsized downstream of parts of the process that became. Prone to overflow when we get these high rainfall events. It hadn't been too much of a problem for the first ten or fifteen years or so. But as you know, we've been getting some pretty intense rainfall events these last few years and sometimes they come back to back. And when we do that, we we found that we had crew that had to be down there on a moment's notice, putting pumps into some of our structures to bypass around them. Otherwise, they would overflow and that's a problem because then raw sewage goes in directly into the the storm drainage system and into the. Into the river and that's that's a violation of our permit. Our excellent crew has been able to avoid that, but we had some very close calls. So we, over the last couple of years, after knowing that, began a process of fixing those deficiencies. And so the deficiencies make up the first two or three years of what you're going to see in a minute in our capital facilities plan. The second part of this was, again, what kind of lifetime do we have on the plant? At its permit limits and as I mentioned, and we weren't quite able to meet those, but we will when we get the improvements done that. These remediation improvements. But the analysis has shown that we've got at least ten years left, all things being equal. And it may even be a little longer. I'm going to meet with staff tomorrow and talk about it. I mentioned the eighty five percent limits. They're they're kind of technical, but basically if our if our our. Average or max monthly flow, that two point oh seven million gallon figure. When that gets to one point seven MGD. We have to start this facility plan and that the metric is if we have three months in a row. At that eighty five percent figure, then that kicks in that plan from a flow perspective. That's what the metric is. Our plant's been looking at that as an average of of three years instead of three months and. And from that metric, if you looked at it at the highest peaks per per year for three years, we're very close to that already. But that's not what the permit says. So I think we've got a bit more time than 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 they've been thinking. So anyway, that's where we're at on that. I have cranked into the the capital improvement program. A facility plan out towards the end of that ten year period. And I have also cranked in there after the plans completed, assuming we'll have to do the upgrades that are called for. So and I mentioned down the bottom what the flows, the peak monthly flow we've seen has been one point four eight four. And actually, that was in twenty eighteen fairly recently. Twenty nineteen was a mild year. We didn't see much there. We were actually down close to one point oh. But it was it was getting up there. That was the highest we've seen since we've been recording it for a single month. Max monthly flow. That's still under our limit though for planning, as I mentioned. Okay, so capital improvements program, we've identified twenty three point one million dollars in treatment plan improvements over the ten year planning period. And those are, as I mentioned before, both corrections and capacity improvements. I didn't mention before, we we also had an unpleasant surprise. Actually, it came out of the fact that. The rules change over time. The National Electric Code, which is the governing document on for the whole nation on how you build and operate. Electrical systems has changed a bit over the last decade and it now requires measurement on. What we call buckets, the motor control centers, the panels, if you will, like the breaker panel in your house. It requires you to check those and if there is too much what they call incident energy at those. Locations, then you have to fix that. Basically. The the problem is, is if you have too much energy that is emanating from those those things that shouldn't be there. It could shock or electrocute somebody operating that equipment, even tripping the breaker. And we had the unpleasant surprise when we did our arc flash study that we had a major problem with that in our motor control centers at the plant. So we've got a project that is out to bid and closes next week that will fix that. We basically are are going to put a new. Inline breaker downstream of our main transformer that will be will filter out that incident energy before it gets to our. Panels. There's a bunch of other stuff that has to happen with it. It sounds relatively simple, but. We have to put a temporary transformer in so we can bypass around our our motor control center while we're doing this and it's it's about a five hundred thousand dollar project. To do that. So anyway, that was, that's a major project on our short term list. And I've kind of in the bullets talked about that. Plus, there's some small structural issues with our tanks. Some of our tanks are forty years old now from the seventy three upgrades. They're still in relatively good shape. Concrete fortunately gets stronger for many years and. Other than some cracking that we need to seal, they're in decent shape and we think they'll be good for another twenty years. And are are not planning to rebuild those in in the process of our planning. We've got three mechanical projects that that are related to the capacity. Preservation, so to speak, dealing with the things that are not correct right now, the last of which was. In addition to the blowers, we're going to replace those with higher capacity units. We are already replacing the aerators inside of our digestors to support that. And the other one. Our existing wastewater laboratory down there is built on a tank. Another kind of mistake by the engineers at that time seemed like a good idea. Problem is a sewer gas is very stinky and they found when they operated that tank under the. Lab, it was uninhabitable inside. And so. We've had one hand tied behind our back for twenty years now because they've had to bypass around one part of the process. Because the staff is is excellent and because we were at such low. Portion of our flow in those early years, they were able to modify the process. And avoid having to use that tank, but we're at the point now in our growth that we're close enough to. Our capacity that we need to put that tank in service and that's that's requiring us to rebuild. Put a new laboratory operations building in separate from that site, remove the existing one, add some. Some new aerators to that tank and put it back in service and that's part of the improvements that are called out here and as well. Next slide, please. Getting close. So the financial plan, which is chapter nine of the study, it summarizes the sewer utility financial history. Identifies funding sources, provides a plan for recommended capital improvements, which I've been talking about here for too long. And the ten year financial plan. This is where Katie came into the equation. She cranked all that in and we looked at how that would affect rates to support those improvements. The recommendations that came out of that study were to continue to increase the sewer general facilities charge periodically. I should say just annually for the Consumer Price Index for inflation. To continue to increase sewer rates annually for Consumer Price Index for inflation. And it also anticipates significant borrowing for the design and construction of the planned twenty twenty seven. Plant expansion. We. We had the decided. Goal in mind in doing all of this to not have to borrow until we absolutely have to. And we've been successful at that with this particular combination of the sewer treatment facility and collection system. CIP that we put together. If we continue to increase the rates at the CPI on an annual basis. And adjust the connection fees to account for growth, we should be able to remain with our existing. Rate structure for at least seven years. We'll have to start ramping up after that because there will be a significant amount of new debt that will be. Encouraged to rebuild another plants, just too much money to fund from rates. And we also will continue and we've been doing this to monitor our rates outlook annually. We have Katie do that. And then we adjust as needed to support operations. Final slide, please. Oh, I'm way behind on your slides, Bill. That one more. Okay, so. Just one other note, John will be talking about this. We have also in table nine, six of the document anticipated the. New ADUs that you've been working so diligently on. We have included a new ADU category that we didn't have in our previous planning. That's the same as what's being proposed for transportation. And it's based on square footage as the ADU ordinance. Is for greater than or equal four hundred and fifty square foot at sixty one percent of the base rate. And less than four hundred and fifty square foot for the at thirty percent of the base rate. And that's everything I have on the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Director Freiberger? Mark, thank you very much. You know, we we take things so simply when we flush a toilet and then we don't really understand the complexity. Of what really happens behind the scenes, so to speak. So again, thanks for your time. It was pretty enlightening. Again, any questions for the director? So what what we picture happening here is mentioned in the cover memo for this is a recommendation from the planning commission. If you're comfortable with this. Go now to the to the council. There's some processes that need to happen in between now and then. There's a there's a sixty day public comment period that. Will. Come after this meeting.
Well, it's not a, that's not a public comment period per se. That's the. That is that the the ecology, whether you're speaking of?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Well. Well, anyway, you can you can clean up my misconception of that. But anyway, there's there's some timeline. Happen after this. And then we'll be ready to go to council, we believe, at the the first meeting in September. For a first read and adoption after that sixty day period is done, the second meeting in September, so. That's basically all of that. John, did I get that roughly correct?
I'm not familiar with what the timeline is for your Department of Ecology. Public comment period and if it's a public comment period or if it's just the review period, I'm not sure. There's a sixty day Department of Commerce review period where that's out to state agencies for review and. The Department of Commerce reviews it for compliance with Growth Management Act and other state regulations. But it's not a public comment period per se. They just give themselves sixty days to review all changes to our comprehensive plan and development regulations.
Thank you for clarifying that. I actually said that in the memo, should have read my own memo.
But I do believe there is an ecology.
There is an ecology process that follows council adoption and so final. It will be adopted by council and then it goes to ecology for their their bite at the apple. So yeah, little ways yet before this will be actually adopted and and put in place.
So for process wise right now. If we, if there's anybody in the public that would like to comment, we'll we'll do our best right now with the help of Bill Chambers, our IT director who's. Manning this process. To see if there's anybody that has any public comments on the sewer comp plan. If not, or if we're seeing that people are having troubles. We could. Hold the public comment period open longer or if that doesn't work for the Public Works Department. We could. We could close it today after trying to get some public comments. So Bill, is there is there a, do you have any directions for anybody who would like to speak if they. Were able to raise their hand or just audibly chime in right now?
I think your best bet is to ask them to audibly chime in because callers on the phone can't really raise their hand.
So people are using one of the apps, there is a raise your hand feature. And if you're unable to access that, but you would like to speak on this issue. Then now would be time to either just. Speak and or use the raise your hand feature. I'm literally hearing crickets from somebody's background phone, so I guess that means that nobody is interested in speaking for. For the purposes of the public hearing, the the chair should probably open the public hearing comment period. Roughly seven twenty three and then close it when you feel you're ready to.
Okay, well, we'll open the public hearing portion right now at seven twenty three. Just one one point of a procedure, Michelle. On the roll call, can you just please note that Commissioner Johnson wasn't present? All of the planning commissioners are present. So John, how do you want to handle this? I I know you wanted to potentially review the individual. Rezone request first.
Well, those will have separate, those will have separate public hearings. Right now, we're just having a public hearing for the sewer comp plan update.
Okay, if there's, if there's no comments, I'm ready to close the public hearing on the 2020 sewer comprehend, what do you call it, update.
At 7:24.
At 7:24. So let's move on to rezon request number 2020.
Does, does the planning commission care to, before you move on, does the planning commission want to discuss any of the sewer comp plan or are you interested in making a motion for a recommendation as requested by the Public Works Director?
Can you repeat that again? Because this is still an open item until 60 days out, right?
No, no, this is, this is the public hearing at the local level. And the planning commission has been asked to make a recommendation to adopt the sewer comprehensive plan update. So if there's no public comments, then, then
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen.
That they can, they can do that.
So ladies and gentlemen, I'm ready for a motion. Who would like to start it off?
I'll make a motion to recommend the sewer comprehensive plan to the city council. I don't have the actual language in front of me, but that might do it.
That's pretty close.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Pennau?
I'll, I'll second it. Commissioner Huggins?
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Huggins, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes. As, as stated by Commissioner Maddox. So John, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. So we talked about this earlier. Do you want to review the different rezon requests prior to taking comments from the public?
Yeah, so here, I'll, I'll explain the, what the process that we typically follow. So there's two zoning, there's two requests for rezones. My computer just crashed. I'm trying to, trying to get back into my computer and speak at the same time. I apologize. There's two rezon requests, one from Mr. Quam and one from Mr. Ruby. We're going to have a public hearing, separate public hearing for each of them. Because they're different, they're different proposals. We sent out notices of application for each of them and posted on the site the, that there's a public hearing and a public comment period. So today's going to be the, the public hearing. Because of the, the technical difficulties of using Zoom, we wanted to leave the public hearing open a little longer than, than just today to ensure that anybody that maybe wasn't able to use this Zoom app were able to, to, to submit public comments on their own. And there's also, also a notice, the, the comment period for the notice of application is still open until the 24th. So I'd like to leave that open until the 24th.
You know, I saw that recommendation. I think there is a typo in the recommendation where PC hold the public hearing open until at least June 24th. I believe that should be July 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, let's start with the, the first rezon application, which is the, the Quam rezon, rezon file number 2020-010. I'm going to give a presentation about it. And then we'd like to be able to hear from the applicant who I see is on the line. And then after he speaks, then we can open it, open the public hearing for this rezon. After which you can close the public comment part, but the, you know, for the night. But the public comment period will remain open until July 24th at 4:30. Instructions are if you have any written comments, to send them to the assistant planner, Catherine Weir, and the information is on the website and on the notices. So that's, that's the background there. We're not going to do a, I'm not going to ask for any recommendations since we're going to be holding the public hearing open. And then we can have another meet, the next meeting in August, the planning commission will then have, you know, all the written comments and everything in front of them. We'll have had time to study the issue a little further and make a recommendation in August. If you're prepared to do so, then. So let me get started with the first rezon. It's a rezon request in the southwestern most part of the city on the south side of Highway 20, along Gaige's Slough. It's, it's a triangle property. It's roughly 2.5 acres and it's currently zoned industrial. If you're, if you're following along on the memo that I put out on page four, there's a map of the, the location. And subsequent pages, there's aerial maps also. And what you can see is that it's the vacant piece of property. It had been used for past year in the past. It does not appear to be used for anything like that. But we can hear from the applicant more when it says turn to speak. It is more or less adjacent to the Hart Slough. It's south of the railroad. So it's pinned in by the slough and it's pinned in by the railroad. And then north of the railroad is Highway 20. And then to the, the other side of it on the east is a residential property with just one residence. So it has, it has a rural character right now. And it was, when we did a big rezon back in 2008, it was, I'm pretty sure it was zoned industrial at that time. And we worked with the applicant, the owner of the property at that time to see if they wished to change it. They requested that it stay as is. So we left it. Now it has a new owner, Mr. Quam and his family. And they've pointed out that, you know, it's very unlikely for them to be able to develop it as industrial largely because of the 200 foot buffer from the slough. So the slough is a regulated water body with a 200 foot standard buffer on it. If you look at figure three, which is on the next page of the, the memo, you can see that the, the light green area that's overlaid over the triangle is the 200 foot buffer from the creek, from the river, well, the slough. So it really encumbers quite a bit. And you can see just to the east, there's a house for scale. So in the remaining area outside the buffer, there's about 14,000 square feet of triangle lot. So if you were to just use that 14,000 square feet, you could get one, maybe two residential dwellings on it. Or maybe in the R7, in the R7 zone, as the request for this rezon is, you can get a duplex on a lot that size. So the property is severely encumbered. It is possible to use the encumbered area if you do mitigation and other things. But the, the fact of the matter is, you know, industrial, industrial uses take up more land than 14,000 square feet typically and have fairly high impact on the surrounding area. You know, there's potential for spills and noise and light. Well, the, the noise and light pollution would affect one residential lot. It wouldn't affect a whole bunch of other residential lots. But if there were to be any hazardous materials associated with the industrial zone, having it right next to the Skaggs River is possibly not the best location. So it's also partially in the flood zone. The next, next figure shows the flood zone. I apologize, I do not have the lot on it. But it is basically that triangle just where it says Burlington. Imagine that goes down, the, the, the black part is covering about half of this parcel. So it's in the flood zone. It's in a buffer area. And it's just, and getting across the, the railroad with a commercial access could also be difficult. So these are all the points that the applicant had made in their application, which is also part of the memo. And for all these reasons, staff sees that, you know, it would be a difficult property to develop for commercial. And if it were to be rezoned as residential seven, without doing, you know, mitigation for buffer setbacks, you could get two units on it. So it would be a fairly small impact on the population projections, but negligible, honestly. It wouldn't even consider, wouldn't even be concerned about two units for the rezon purposes. But it, it just seems very unlikely to be industrial. So that's, that's staff's presentation. We did recommend that if the planning commission finds, so they, they may recommend the rezon. And now that I'm done, I'd like to invite Mr. Quam to speak. Hopefully he's able to.
Okay, I'm here. You hear me?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Okay. I, I guess I'll take questions if there are any from the planning commission.
Yeah, this is just a, a point of order. Did I need to officially reopen the rezon request section of the public meeting just to have that on record? Or earlier on when?
So if, if Mr. Quam doesn't have any presentation per se, then, then yeah, what you can do is you, you wouldn't reopen it. You're, you're opening the new public hearing for this. And then after people have had their chance to speak, we're going to close the speed, the verb, the oral presentation for tonight, but keep the, the public hearing open until July 24th at 4:30.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything at this particular point.
Well, you do, you do need to open it first.
Okay, so I would like to open the item number two, the rezon request number 2020-010, Mr. Quam's rezon for a public comment at, at this time. Mr. Quam, go ahead.
I really have no presentation to make. Mr. Coleman did an excellent job of summarizing the issue. And so I just do let it sit right that, sit there.
Okay, does any have, anyone have any questions for Mr. Quam?
And are there any, are there any people on the, on the Zoom app or on phone that would also like to speak on this issue as part of the public hearing?
I'm going to take that as a no.
Um, I'd just like to, I, this particular rezon seems to make sense to me and seems reasonable. But I am concerned about availability of industrial land in the city and our, I know that we have quotas under the Growth Management Act of how much of each type of zoning that we have. And if, if this will affect that in any way, this is probably a question for you, John. And if we need to mitigate that or if we have to go about finding some other sort of industrial land to make this rezon work.
So, uh, yeah, that's a very good point, you know, the loss of industrial land. We, we can bank it and, you know, what we're, what we're, what we're trying to achieve for members of the audience who haven't been part of the comprehensive planning cycle before, through the county and the state, each jurisdiction is determined that the necessary amount of residential and commercial and industrial land within their city and have set the zoning and set our urban growth area boundaries to the size necessary to accommodate that, those needs. And those needs are all based on the population projections that are established by the state. And, and then commercial industrial lands are based on, are anticipated commercial and industrial growth based on past growth in the cities for, for commercial and industrial. So we looked at our past trends. We determined what our projection is likely to be. Those projections are all approved by the, the Skagit, by Skagit County as well as the Skagit County Council of Governments Steering Committee. And then ultimately approved by the state. So when we are looking at rezones, we're trying to maintain a balance of those residential and commercial lands. If we're losing, as Commissioner Maddox pointed out, if we're, if we're losing 2.5 acres of industrial land and adding 2.5 of residential, we need to show that it's going to keep close to what the projections and the amount of land that we've said we needed are, are going to be. So with this, you know, like I said, it's, it would increase the population projection by two. So that, by two residents, which would be roughly five people. So that's pretty negligible. And I'm sure that the, the Skagit County and the Department of Commerce are not going to have any concerns about that. Now, the loss of industrial land is bad for the city and we'd like to make that up someplace. So we're, we're always trying to figure out where to put new industrial land. And that has also been tough. Those have been on the planning commission for the past many years have known that when we have proposed to increase industrial land, where, you know, in an area that's not currently zoned industrial, the neighborhood has a lot of concerns and comments. And it often doesn't, doesn't happen, doesn't get done. So it's tough to cite new industrial land. So that will be a concern. As far as accounting and balancing for industrial land, we can, you know, in future, in future comp plan updates, we can look at the adding, you know, 2.5 acres. That's pretty negligible also. While it is a loss, you know, this land is unlikely to be used anyway. So it's kind of using up some of our allotment. So in ways it might be better to remove the industrial zone and for lack of a better word, bank that 2.5 acres and see if we can find it someplace else over the next couple of years as part of another comprehensive plan cycle. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. I, I think that, like I said, I, I think that overall this, based on your presentation, this rezon makes sense. And like, like you said, it's unlikely to really probably get used for a productive industrial purpose in the future. So thank you for that explanation.
Hey, John, this is just a question. As, as we move through these different items, what I'll do at the conclusion of this particular portion, I'll read off your recommendation as in the, the public hearing portion will remain open until a further date. However, I'll close out the public comment portion.
Well, we, the oral comment, we use oral comment.
Okay, oral comment. So before I do that, okay, is that how you want this to work?
Yeah, we're not going to be making any recommendations. We'll just close at the end of the, the public comment period and, and revisit the issue. at the August meeting.
Okay, would you like me to read your text into the record prior to moving on?
Yeah, is in, we should probably see, I guess nobody else has any comments. So yeah, that'd be that'd be great.
Okay, so at this particular point, before we move on to the next item, staff's recommendation. Go ahead. Sorry, Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I just wanted to go on on the record, you know, it's easy to sit here and it just looks like, you know, nothing's going on. But I just wanted to chime in that I've been out and looked at the site and I'm well familiar with the with the area there. And the the presentation, as John gave it to me, I also agree that, you know, this is one of the easier things we've had to do. I I also don't like to lose industrial land, but but it's not that much. And so anyway, I'm just gonna go on the record that 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 I'm aware of it and and ready to make a decision when we get to that here in a week or two. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Joe, go ahead, Joe.
Oh, there's one other date that's wrong on the document, if anyone cares.
I care.
It says we're going to talk about this on July 22nd meeting. 22nd?
On what page is that?
Page two. One, two, three, fourth paragraph, second line.
No, a couple of dates are wrong. It's back to that June 24th. It should read July 24th on that page as well.
Yeah. I heard you right now.
So the first one, the on page two, it should read July 21st meeting.
Right.
Right. And then July 24th for the opening.
July 24th. I'll correct that in the the next memo.
Stacy, did you raise your hand? Anyone else, Danielle?
I just think it makes sense.
Okay. Anyone else before we move on? So prior to closing the public oral comments portion of this section, I'm just gonna read into the record, the planning department recommends that the planning commission hold a public meeting open till at least July 24th, even though the item says June 24th, July 24th at 4:30 and review the Quam rezone proposal further than August 18, 2020, planning commission meeting. The planning commission may make a recommendation at that August meeting. So I'm closing the public oral comments at 7:47. And now we'll move on to file number RZ dash 2020 dash 010. John, take it away.
All right. So this one is a kind of a kind of the same thing, just a little bit bigger. And instead of going from industrial to residential, the request is to go from mixed commercial to residential five. So if you go to page eight of the agenda of, I'm sorry, the memo, it shows the parcel that is part of this request highlighted in kind of a lighter bluish green. And then the pink area is the rezone area. This property is one one parcel, one county parcel, but it has two different zoning designations on it. So we call that a split zone. The pink area is zoned to mixed commercial. The remaining part of the parcel is zoned residential five, which is our basic single family residential neighborhood that takes up, that is seen throughout much of the city. This mixed commercial zoning happened prior to 15 years ago, so I wasn't around for it, but some of the planning commission members likely have been. I believe this property was zoned as mixed commercial as a potential commercial node for the Sauk Mountain View Estates subdivision, which is roughly 250 lots just to the north and slightly west of this commercial node. So it would be, you know, it's three acres. There's a creek on the the west side of it. And a gas line easement across the that south edge of it. So it's a it's it's fairly constrained. It's not something that was going to be a Walmart, but it, you know, might have been a a convenience store in a dry cleaner kind of kind of deal, probably not even a gas station, while it's large enough to, it wouldn't seem likely for a gas station location, but more like just a convenience outpost for the the adjacent residential. Now, obviously, it's nothing like that has happened in the past. The area in question is part of the larger golf course. So this parcel, which is, I believe it says about 20.9 acres, I'm looking at the map instead of the text. 20, okay, so the larger parcel is 23.9 acres, which is, you know, off the cuff, about half of the overall golf course size. Maybe the property owner can tell us. So the the property owner of this parcel is a property owner of the entire golf course. So they can tell us more about the the total acreage there. The the idea of the rezone is the property owner would like to do a subdivision at the golf course and the mixed commercial area can't be developed as residential. So the the rezone request would enable further development. So there's going to be two things that come up. I'm just gonna try to address this straight ahead on it. So we're talking about a rezone, which is changing the zoning from mixed commercial to R5. The mixed commercial zone, under its current zoning, it could be allowed to be commercial, retail, those sorts of uses. And, you know, there's, there's nothing saying that it couldn't develop tomorrow as a gas station. They would just have to meet the the city regulations for, you know, the adjacent critical areas, stormwater management, and all the things that a typical development would do. So the rezone change is a change in the zoning. Any development impacts of at a use on the property would be addressed at the time of the development application. So there's going to be a lot of comments about stormwater, I understand. And those are all important comments. I just want everybody to know that, you know, while the while it's important to to note these limitations on the property that people are concerned about. And, you know, the same thing could happen under its mixed commercial zoning. You know, if somebody were to develop that property as a mini mart, it would still potentially have the same impact on flooding in the issue area as if it were to be developed as residential. Not trying to discount anybody's comments. It's just a little tough when you were talking about a change of land use allowance. We're not actually talking about a specific development, though it's very clear that, you know, if it were to rezone to R5, then it would be likely to become a residential subdivision in the not distant future. So now that that's out of the way, talk a little bit more about the parcel itself. So there's, as I mentioned, there's a creek that runs north, south through the property. And that is shown on the next page, page nine, there's a visual there showing the creek that runs north, south. That is an unnamed creek, and it runs south until it hits Brickyard Creek, which is the other green highlighted area. And that green highlighted area, it's difficult to tell on the screen, is, you know, the the lighter green is a 55 foot buffer on either side of the creek. And then the 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 more faded lighter green is the 110 foot standard buffer on the creek. Typically, these creeks have a 110 foot buffer on either side of the 110, on either side of the ordinary high watermark. The so you can't do any development within that property, 110 feet. Or you can do mitigation along the stream bank if you get the biologist to give an approved restoration plan. So then you can reduce that buffer down to 55 feet on either side of the creek if you do enhancements in the riparian area. So the idea is the the developer can leave that 110 foot buffer as it is. And they have to stay 110 feet away. Or they can put extra money and effort into making it better habitat. And then we'll allow the development to come 55 feet from the creek instead of just 110. There's actually benefits to going down to 55 feet because you get an enhanced riparian zone instead of just mowed grass along the creek, which isn't necessarily very beneficial for habitat. There's also easements across the property. Anybody that lives in the area knows that there's a major gas line that crosses right along the south edge of that of the the mixed commercial zone area. And you can see there's the pump stations for the the gas line just south of the area on on Fruitdale. I think that's most of the facts that I have for this. Because it's, I did talk about some of the the accounting for population in the area. Right now, it's three acres of mixed commercial. If it were to be rezoned based on the the buffers on the area, we're thinking that it would contribute up 10, somewhere between 10 and 14 units of residential density based on five units per acre, which has a bit of an impact. 10 units would be 29 people. 14 units would be 30 people roughly. So it has a minor impact on our calculations for population projections. The extent of which it's unknown if that's going to be a major concern for for the county and and the Department of Commerce as far as, you know, making sure that our population projections are the same. That's about all I have to present. We don't really have a recommendation. I was staff really wanted to hear from the public on this one to to gauge interest. We're we're kind of on the fence on this on this proposal, I guess you could say, and are interested in what the community has to say. So I guess if I'm done and nobody has any direct questions or anything that I just said, or then we can move on to the property owner, Mr. Bob Ruby. And then after that, you can open the public hearing.
So at this particular point, Pat, let me open up the public comments section. And then when we're done, we'll have our own discussion. You know, prior to opening the, well, as of 7:58 PM on 7/21, we're going to open up the public oral comments section regarding item rezone request number 2020 dash 12. Now, prior to taking calls, let me read into the record one email that was received from a Mr. Hartfield. And let's hold our comments until we get the full public comments. We can discuss the email at the end as well. So it was addressed to Mrs. Weir. Catherine, congratulations. I didn't know you were married. But anyway, Mrs. Weir, good evening. I received a copy of the development application for the golf course at Fruitdale in Portobello. Unfortunately, I've been working on a COVID response, the date of the public hearing. I would like to request a record of the meeting, if possible, for the Sauk Mountain View Estates North HOA. And would specifically like to know if these properties will be required to be a part of or one of the existing HOAs, or if they will become a separate one of their own. If there is anything I can do with this assistance, please let me know. Thank you. Doug Hartfield, HOA president, Sauk Mountain View Estates North HOA. With that, I hear we have callers that are present.
Well, we should, we should definitely start with the the project proponent gets to 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 speak first. And I'm fairly certain I saw.
That that's great. Mr. Ruby, are you there?
Yeah. Good evening. Can I be heard?
Absolutely. I hear you.
Oh, good, great, good. Thank you. As Mr. Coleman said, the areas between two to three acres, it's a rezone request for mixed commercial to R5 residential. It's located in what I think of as the upper northeast corner, excuse me, that's the actually southwest corner of Portobello and Fruitdale Road. Our plan is to apply for an R5 PRD subdivision in the surrounding area. We've done study after study and have had nothing conclusive to indicate that leaving it as it remains mixed commercial is helpful for the area. It it's not incompatible with the area. There's residential zoning on three sides of the property as it is now. That combined with housing demand, the best use for the land, the demographics would indicate and and always have that a rezone request and a change to R5 is the 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 best use for the land. So I think Mr. Coleman did a great job of his staff presentation and reviewing the work that he did. Certainly, I would urge and recommend you to continue to follow through with this and rezone the property, if you would, please. And that concludes my comments.
Is there anyone else in the public online right now that would like to have any additional So with that, let's move on to our planning commission members. Raise your hand and we'll hear what people have to say regarding this proposal. Anyone? Pat, Joe, Danielle, go ahead. Go ahead, John.
So this is John. We have some additional comments that Catherine was going to read in. We can do that after or before, probably do it before we get into any discussion.
Okay, so why don't we do that now? That'd be great. Sure.
Catherine, are you available to read those?
Yes. So can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, everyone. So we have our first comment, Joe Fatizzi read that from Doug Hartfield. And our second comment was received on July 20th at 2020 via email from Les and Suzy Williams. So I will go ahead and read. I am writing to request to be included as a party of public record and asked to to be kept informed on this rezone request from Mr. Ruby. The following are my questions, comments, concerns, and objections to this plan. Is the purpose of rezone for housing development? If so, how can residents be built in a sub-flood control zone? Where would the water go that fills the that land with water? As I read the map, that land area is underwater at least nine months out of the year. We spend a great deal of time there and have lived next to this golf course for 46 years. The golf course The golf course during heavy rain and flood fills Brickyard Creek until rather than spilling over McEgerical and Fruitdale Road, it flows into the golf course. Many times, almost the entire golf course is heavily flooded and the creek comes near to threaten our neighborhoods. The major floods of 1975 and 1990 did bring water into our area. Problems have already existed within Brickyard Creek from improper drain off Portobello Drive and Sock Mountain View Estates. Inadequate stormwater drain system has failed to protect creek from stormwater runoff and flooding. Prior to Sock Mountain Housing Development, Independence Lane had never had floodwaters in two residents' homes. Since the development, they have twice suffered floodwaters in their homes. This property is frequently flooded area. The more houses, the greater the risks. So who is responsible for liability if their actions cause flooding of our homes? The more concrete, the more water. Subflood control zones are there to prevent this. And the planning commission should have a responsibility to protect our property from risks slash damages. Who is responsible for protecting our property slash neighborhoods from flash flooding and excessive amounts of water that collect in this area due to development? Where the water goes is vital to the protection of our property. We have already on many occasions notified the city of our serious potential of this threat. We are not convinced or trust that this proposal will not have a significant impact on our living environment. Safety concerns of development on and around the gas lines compromising integrity of pipelines, creating risk of potential pipeline anomalies due to heavy equipment, et cetera, used in land development. Though the risk may not be great, pipelines do have accidents. We ask for you to consider our objection to this rezon proposal and deny their request to change rezon to R5. Number 2020-012. Would also like to say to you how very disappointed we are about the very little amount of time you gave us. You gave notice of this proposal to us. We could list many other concerns we have about development of the golf course property. Wildlife, habitat, wetlands, creeks, and streams. Concerns that all requirements of setbacks on golf course property will be met. Thank you for consideration of our strong objections to this proposal or any development on the golf course property until the city can assure us that it would not create serious risk to our property. Tell us exactly how you can manage the water that fills the golf course with feet of water at times. And where will that water go? Sincerely, Les Suzy Williams, July 19, 2020. Our final comment was received on July 21st, 2020, from Terry Judd. It says, hello, I have watched the golf course flood several times a year for many years. I'm concerned and would be interested to hear where the floodwaters will go. It also floods across the street. That land elevation is higher than the golf course. I will be on the Zoom call tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to contribute. Respectfully, Terry Judd. And that concludes the comments.
Was that it, Catherine?
Yes.
Okay. So John, is it appropriate now to have different commissioners start commenting on the different aspects of the different comments presented by the public?
Yeah, but I would appreciate if you could put one more call out to anybody that's on the phone that might want to speak. They can just take themselves off mute. And if they're interested in speaking, just speak up and we'll, we'll be happy to hear their comments. Otherwise, we'll kind of move on from the oral presentation part of this and start discussing and trying to address some of the things that have been spoken about.
Okay, so at this point, if there's anyone else outside of Mr. Ruby, who's already made his comments available in our virtual domain here, now would be the time to let us know you have something to present. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make any oral comments regarding this matter? So that does not sound like anyone's here. So at this particular point, I'm going to open it to fellow commissioners to opine on something. But one thing I would like to add here. The term PRDs been mentioned a couple of times here. This parcel here is under three acres. So I don't believe it's available to develop under the PRD component for the different residential zones due to the size. And John, you can comment on that, that, that. But it's too small.
Well, the larger parcel is 23 acres.
Right, okay.
And the property owner owns adjacent parcels to that too. So if we were to rezone, it would be, it would be all part of a piece of property that would definitely be large enough for a PRD. So we would assume the five units per acre.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this one piece here, so that makes sense. So anyway, fellow commissioners, who'd like to go first? I know, Pat, you had some concerns on some things in the past, so take it away.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you. So I'll dump the whole can of worms out on the table and then we can start picking through them. This whole property, the entire golf course. I'm not even sure how it got put in as R5 in the first place. I don't have a recollection of it. But anyway, my concern is when I was a kid, I used to wade across that golf course. What was a swamp and it was up to my waist and I would walk across it to get to my grandfather's house. And then I watched in the seventies as they brought in, I don't know how many, like probably 500 dump truck loads of dirt. They said is a conditional use of a wetland for the golf course. And, and then you've heard the comments from the people who live, who live near there that, that it's underwater. I wouldn't say it was nine months out of the year, but it's at least four to six months out of the year. So it's not, not good residential property. It's just going to add to the, to the problem that already exists with flooding in the area. Specifically with the property we're talking about tonight, I have two, two issues with it. One is, is the question I just brought up, which is I was under the, under the impression that it was a conditional use of a wetland when it was turned into a golf course. And that if it wasn't the golf course, it had to go back to to critical area or wetland. It may not have had that designation at the time it was done. But anyway, that was my understanding and John, you can answer these when I'm done. But the other question or the other problem I had was the yeah, I lost it. So if you want to, if you want to comment on the other one, I'll think of my other one while you're while you're telling me about whether we were able to find any information on on whether it was a conditional use and, and what happens if it's no longer used as a, as a golf course.
So I've been poking around in the files because I have heard this in the past. But I haven't done a complete search. I have not come up with something like that. Unfortunately, it's going to take, going through probably the minutes of every planning commission and city council meeting for several years to try to figure out if, if that was the case. You're not the first person that I've heard that from, so it probably warrants the the search, but I haven't seen anything yet. And if someone can provide me a timeframe for which they think that conditionally use permit may have been issued. That would be, give a good starting point, but haven't, haven't come across anything like that yet.
John, wouldn't that be a recorded document if it was in place?
It depends on how old, the older documents. No, and well, actually, we don't, we don't record our conditionally used permits.
It was, it would have been through the county anyway. It was in the county when or it just barely come into the city when, when they did that. I want to say it was, I mean, it was happening in 98 through 2001. I came on the planning commission in 2001 and it was the, it was, it was what I sat in on and listened to when I was trying to decide whether I want to be a planning commissioner or not.
Well, that's not when it was turned into a golf course, was it?
No, 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 that was back in the mid seventies, but it was.
Well, that, that, so that's the conditionally used permit that we would be searching for. If there's anything that says that if it's ever used for something besides a golf course, then it has to revert back to its previous. Anything like that would have been done previous to 1998 through 2001 when it was annexed.
Right.
So I think, I think it was about 1998 or so when it was annexed. It's confusing because there are several annexations in that area and they were odd shapes, so particular lots. I'm not exactly sure when this one was, was annexed. So if that's a county document, when it was developed as a golf course, then we, we'd be, we need to search the county files.
Yeah. My, my other question, since I just remembered it was that, or my other concern was that sitting in on all those meetings when they were planning the Sock Mountain Estates. John Lang specifically, because it was, I think on his side of the, he owned the property on that side of Portobello, but and the golf course, but he repeatedly, and if, I think they were recording back then in 98 when, when he was doing that division. But he kept using the golf course as his reason for why we could make the lots so tiny. He said it was a golf community, that the lots were going to be smaller because there was open area under the power lines. And there was all of the golf course as open area. And so again, I have a real problem with the fact that it's even listed as R5 because it should have been listed as open space. And, and again, I think if you go back and listen to the tapes from, from those planning commission meetings and city council meetings when they were proposing the Sock Mountain Estate and the size of the lots and whatnot, that probably every other sentence, they mentioned the golf course as offsetting open space. So those are my two concerns and I think they have to be solved before we can, at least before I can make any kind of a yea or nay on, on what to do with the little piece of property up in the corner there of the mixed commercial.
Anyone else? Commissioner Maddox, Frenette, Freiberger, Penno?
No, I'm glad that if I can speak, I'm glad Pat brought that up because I'd heard it in the past and I needed it heard again, so I could refresh my memory. So thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
You know, would it make sense, John, to have Director Freiberger maybe comment on the surface water capacity in that area? In addition to that, unmade type three stream. It seems that the ability is there for surface water removal. That it just hasn't been addressed at this particular time. Does that make sense? Flooding is clearly an issue with everybody, but what's our ability to remove it?
Well, that's what I was alluding to earlier in my discussion is flooding is going to be an issue whether it's mixed commercial or whether it's residential, although it's far more likely to develop if it's residential. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to sweep that out, sweep that under the rug. Just going to say it's, it's, it's an issue regardless of the use of the land and until, yeah, so there needs to be, the stormwater needs to be figured out. And what we typically do with any development, so that's be, you know, taking steps down the road beyond this rezon. We'll, we'll just ignore the rezon for now, but saying if it were to be, if someone would come in for a development at the golf course right now, they would need to show, we'll just say the residential area, not this parcel. Just trying to give a hypothetical situation. They would need to show how that development would affect stormwater in the area. And it needs to follow the Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual to show how it affects the hydrologic regime. Where's the water that would normally come onto this land? Where is it going to go? What's going to happen as development happens? This one is a little bit more complex because there's two streams. There's, you know, a significant history of fill in what we understand was probably a wetland in the past. I haven't unearthed that information to tell this definitively if it was a wetland in the past. Or if it's, it could be a wetland now. It's really going to come down to what the biologists say. But the flooding concern is even separate from the wetlands. So any development would have to address those things. And the question is, you know, do they address them adequately? And, you know, the city does our best to make sure that they adequately do what they're required to by law to not affect upstream, downstream people. Mark would definitely be better to, to speak about that issue, but he does not appear to still be on the call. The Suzy Williams had mentioned that the, the sub-flood control zone area. So that was a, that was a county-enabled taxing district where they taxed the area of Brickyard Creek and lots of other, each, lots of creeks have their own sub-flood control zone area. And then the county, then that sub-flood control zone would manage it as a flood district. And they would basically keep the stream flowing so it wouldn't, so it wouldn't flood. The sub-flood control zone kind of lost their handle on it. They didn't do a lot of work for a while. And the county gave it up and gave it to the city. So now the city maintains the creek and the sub-flood control zone to the best of my knowledge has been dissolved and locals can answer this better than I can. But I believe that the taxing district for this, the Brickyard Creek Subflood Control Zone has also gone away. But I could be wrong about that because I don't live in the area of Brickyard Creek, so I wouldn't receive a tax statement. But I believe they ceased doing that a handful of years ago as the city took over that sub-flood control power. And then there, the Williams has also said, they were asking about whether development can happen in a sub-flood control zone. So the sub-flood control zone is a taxing district for the purposes of maintaining the waterway to, to transfer floodwaters. It wasn't, it wasn't a regulatory authority, so to the best of my knowledge, and I'm going to continue to do research on this. To the best of my knowledge, they did not have any regulatory authority to say that nobody could build in the sub-flood control zone. It was just a taxing district.
Are there any other comments at this point? So just to address the initial email from Mr. Hartfield. So as, just as a matter of record. In chapter 17, 43, 090 specifically. Yes, if a PRD went forward, an HOA would be required. So that's something for Mr. Hartfield, just as for your information. So at this point, is there anyone else in the public audience right now online that would like to make any oral comments regarding this issue? Okay, John, is it okay to move it on?
I'd just like to follow up. So yes, if a PRD was formed, they would have to have a homeowners association. I think Mr. Hartfield's comment was, the question was, would it would that homeowners association be blended into and combined with one of the existing homeowners associations? We don't typically require that. We haven't studied whether that would be necessary. But it seems, it seems more likely, and so I can't make any promises, but it seems way more likely that there would just be a separate homeowners association.
Right, I'm just reading from the code anyway. Yeah, that's pretty much what it says. It doesn't have any requirement if there's a, you know, an adjacent HOA that it needs to be absorbed into that. So just as the way we developed it and wrote, it just says one is required.
So, and then just looking, just looking at the comments. So and then just looking, just looking at the the comments again, I don't want it to seem like I'm just saying, oh, we'll worry about the stormwater later. That's not what we're trying to do. We would definitely, as part of any development, would need to to study the stormwater and how it affects downstream in particular. And this, I think there's enough comments on this property that we'd have to look at it closely and make sure that make sure that we're addressing it because we don't want, we don't want a project to happen that would then cause problems for the neighbor. That doesn't help the neighbor. It doesn't help the city and it doesn't help the developer who then has to come back and and redo things. So our intent is to to make things work well. You know, at some point, it may or may not be possible, though, depending on what what we learn of the hydrologic situation. But generally, we don't see a lot of projects stopped because they can't manage the stormwater.
So at this point, let me read the recommendation into the record and then I'll close the public oral portion of this and we'll move on. So last call, everybody, if anybody is online and would like to make a comment at this time, now would be that time. Anyone else?
Danielle? Yes. So if I'm understanding it, basically what John is saying is that the rezon, it's not like we're pushing the stormwater consideration off, but it's this is a first step that would potentially ease development down the road, but obviously at that point, they would have to consider all the stormwater mitigation and where it would go and everything. But right now, we're asking, does this rezon make sense based on the surroundings? Is that that basically what I'm?
That's how I understand it. Yes. Anyone else?
Right, and and it and it's not necessary for us to solve the stormwater concerns right now. But I think it, and I also don't want to make it seem like it's not important. I do, I think it's important for the planning commission to understand the situation and just understand how the process works. So you're definitely something if you want to consider the stormwater situation, you know, that that's your purview to do so.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, the way I always look at it is that I don't know what, I don't know what the end product is that's going to go on the piece of land. It's just you're looking at the zoning, you know, is this a good place for a mixed commercial business? Is this a good place for a residential house? Is this? And and that's all it is. And then you later, you you figure out, you know, whether what they propose works or not, but they just, you put the final use of the property out of your head and and it's just about what what use is best for the for the land.
Anyone else? Okay, so let me read the recommendation into the record. File number RZ dash two zero two zero two zero dash 12. Public comments are valuable in this case. The planning department recommends that the planning commission hold the public hearing open until at least July 24th at 4:30 PM. After the planning commission considers public comments carefully carefully at this hearing and the August 18th, 2020 planning commission meeting, the planning commission may make a motion that the city council, you know, approve or deny the requested then amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning maps. So at this point, I would like to close the oral public hearing portion of this at 8:28 PM and we'll move forward on into the unfinished business that I see as none. However, Catherine, I thought we were going to do a workup of what a parking situation looked like on that one parcel of land off a Metcalf. Or John, do you want to table that for for a different day?
I didn't put it on the agenda because I knew this would be a big hearing as it is. It's already, it's 8:30. So I think it was probably a good choice not to bring up another agenda item for today. I do have some planning commission discussion things for you, though.
Okay, so new business, there's none on the agenda and the following planning commission discussion information items. Discussion of effects of COVID-19 related issues on the planning commission procedures. Anybody like to have at it?
Well, there's, you know, the the Zoom is, the Zoom webinar is, I think, working, we're getting kind of used to this. It's working a little better each time. We're still in the same status as far as COVID goes. I think everybody's well aware of where we are, you know, statewide. You know, we're still in phase two, so we're not, we're not in phase three yet, so we're still not anticipating having any in-person meetings for a little while. Probably not in August. I'm just going to go out on a limb and say that. And so not much more to say about the COVID stuff.
You know, John, I have a question for you. Yeah, no, the infection rates have skyrocketed lately. Have you heard any talk of a potential even rollback from phase two to maybe a modified phase 1.5 or whatever? Because the numbers that are coming out are pretty frightening.
No, I mean, it's just rumor stuff. I mean, you know, the governor did say it's not off the table, but I I don't have any, I don't have any inside information.
Anybody else? Everybody's quiet? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Go ahead, Silas.
So moved.
Okay, anybody second? Okay. Commissioner Maddox made the motion to adjourn. Commissioner Penno seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:31 on 7/21/2020. Hey, thanks, everybody. Good job.
Yeah, good to see you guys.
Thank you. I think you, that was.